Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to Scottsburg Common Council or City Council meeting for July the 12th, 2021, in the year of our Lord. Well Carl, our council meeting is ordered and we begin by prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're able to stand, let's have prayer. Then after prayer, we will continue with the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we just bow before you today. As you have given a day of joy, Father, and it's been, it has just been a joy to be in this day with brothers and sisters in our community, Father, and the ability to help and the ability to enjoy a good story or tell a good story and just ability to, Father, just to enjoy the life itself. Whether it be our mate or our child or food, we just thank you for it. We thank you that you've given us the help and the ability to enjoy these things, to enjoy the town we live in. We thank you for Scottsburg and we pray your blessing upon this town, Father, and upon its inhabitants, Father, upon our citizens, Father. We have different construction projects going that you've allowed us to do and we thank you for those, Father. We pray for completion in just your continued hand of blessing upon us. I pray for discernment, Father, and wisdom and understanding. All that we do is say thank you as leaders of this city. Father, be with us that we have compassion on all those before us and love for you. We pray for your return and even so come, Lord Jesus, Mary and Mary. Jesus, now we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next thing on our agenda this evening is a roll called by our clerk, Frederick Jan Hart.
May I hear your name?
Here.
Chris Albertson.
Bill Hopland.
Here.
Rick Mann.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Rose.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Arden. Next thing is the approval of the minutes of the June 28th meeting. Will they obtain a motion to pass the minutes as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Chuck Rose makes the motions or a second?
I'll second.
Rick Mann, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? During that, all members say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign? Unanimous. Thank you. We now come to the time of our meeting when we have a public comment. The Scottsburg City Council will accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. Is there anyone here in this evening that would like to come forward? Please come forward, sir. State your name for me before you begin and I'll get your timer set up here for you.
My name is Starman Brad. I live at 839 Main Street. And, well, anyway, I have just basically three questions or three items. I've been asked to, by, this is all in reference to the 7-Eleven, White Street, what everything was about, but the neighbors there had asked me to come up and, they have a question if surveillance cameras are going to be allowed around the 7-Eleven, the 7-Eleven address. They're concerned about safety. My concern is that someone is going to put, well, do something, throw rocks at the place. And just recently in Louisville, they had a house that was vandalized and red paint on it. That is my concern. I don't want bad publicity. The newspapers and news reports come up here and, you know, even make it more worse than it is. That's one. I would also like to have some information. I plan to send a letter to our representatives, to our United States representatives from, well, at least from District Nine, but from other districts also. And I'd like to know how to address that letter. Who to send it to and where to send it to. I've been through on the internet looking and I, it's kind of, you know, there's just so much information. That's the biggest problem with it, is there's so much information. And I want to bring up one more thing. This has to do with some misinformation. There's, everyone is thinking that this is a rehabilitation center. It has nothing to do with rehab. They have, they have no, no medical people involved in it and you can't cure a, someone addicted to opioids without medical, without medical. The metformin is, oh, meth, excuse me, methadone is a, is a medication of choice for opioids and it has to be administered by trained medical professionals. If this place, if this, this is, this is, this group, all they have is a landlord and then the other inmates or ex-inmates that are being placed there, that, they, that's it. There's nothing else. This is not, this, I wanted to make sure that everybody knows. It's not anything to do with rehabilitation. It's, well, they're supposed to be like a family. There's, I don't know too many families that have an alcoholic that they're able to do anything for them. I do know of two families that have had drugs in their family. And without the methadone treats or the medical treatments, they went through all of this halfway house type scenarios and nothing came of it. They finally went to, you know, get medical treatment and they're treated with methadone with opioids and heroin. Methadone works. You, they cannot, they cannot take somebody off addiction strictly on heroin. They go to methadone and that, that suppresses the pain, the anguish and the mental condition of, of the patient, but they can get them to finally give up the methadone. And that's the only way. That's about all I have to say. There was something also about, you said the city lawyer was going to look into it at our last, the last meeting, okay?
He just, my fault was the question we were going to ask him. He just arrived. He's just in here. He just delivered. Voice, he type.
Well, I guess he just hadn't had the chance to, but basically it was to find out more about this place. That's also my, my concern. I don't, I don't want misinformation being put out. That's, that's the big thing. I want to make sure that everything's up and a book order. They, the Oxford House, they don't, they aren't giving out any information. I've been on the internet. Everything that you get off of them is, if you read someplace else, they change. It's changed this, but it's, they're definitely, again, they're not a rehab center at all. They have nothing to do with that. It's you either get off it or you get out or go back to jail or wherever you're going for it. But the one woman that told me her daughter went through a halfway house environment four times and then on the fifth time they sent her to a rehab center, she's off it. Another neighbor of ours has a son that been to rehab two, well, went to a halfway house and that type of situation and didn't, nothing happened until he went to get real rehabilitation with doctors and that those. And everything I've read about, about the Oxford House, you can get, they've got a ton of paper, you know, thirty, forty pages of information and it's BS.
Carl, let me, let me address a couple of your questions there. First off, cameras. The city has cameras in our parks and in a lot of our parking lots in areas of high traffic.
Yeah.
At this point, if, if council wants something like that, you know, I'd ask, we will cancel, can we even do that?
Yes.
If there's good cameras there, if we wanted to.
I mean, if there's a public, I mean, we'd have utility polls, so, I mean, in theory, potentially. I, I, the question was could they or could the neighbors? I mean, I was in the.
Well, the neighbors are.
Yeah.
The neighbors are, then you would have, you would have film documentation if they're doing that. So, I mean, you would already have that covered. So let's go back now to representatives. Your federal representative in this area is Trey Hollingsworth.
Yes, sir.
And if you'll call, if you'll call the mayor's office tomorrow, we can get you both federal representatives, if you'll see Ms. Baker tomorrow.
Okay.
And, and we will get you both federal and state representatives and contact numbers and addresses for us.
Thank you.
And then the last one was, I think, just the statement, the fact that you were talking to us about, well, one other question, Carl, did you have, I was going to ask at legal council. It's about.
The last meeting was that you were waiting for him to come back and he was supposed to look into, to this. If he just got back, I don't think he could really look.
Yeah, he just, he just, he just kind of came, he just kind of came in. I know that, that we did speak with the real estate attorney that we utilized and, and he had said that, he was the one who said that, you know, they had tried this in Clarksville and failed and he was the attorney representing them because the federal government had passed us from court. You know, we as City of Scottsburg already have ordinance that you can't put in a residence later, but the Supreme Court ruling overruled our ordinance. So that was the problem.
Well, that's why I want to get to our US senators to get them to just, you know, where are you, where are you going with this? I mean, these people need help. They don't need to be stumped in a, in a building and who knows what they're going through. Like I said, the one neighbor's daughter went through four times and their daughter told her, says, I got more drugs at the halfway house and then get on the street.
I want to address you, but let's ask, ask, council, do you have anything you want to ask?
Well, I remember one of the issues that was raised at the last meeting was can we, can the, can the city require them to put up a privacy fence? That was one of the things that, that came up and I said, I, I didn't know, I didn't know that we could require that any more than, than we could any other things. But, I mean, I, I hope that would be something that we could.
Do I do the last?
You were looking at, you know, also what, what options does the city have?
Yes.
You know, basically what, what things can you do? There are a lot of things that sound like that we can't do, but do we have the options?
Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing is ensuring that with any residents or any property that it applies with on knowing rules and regulations of the city. I mean, we, we recently passed, I think, I think it was two weeks of the newest ordinance. So there's newer things that are in place in addition to the older ordinances, but they have to follow this as anyone else would. One of the other, my day job, with a, doing a lot of public defense work and criminal defense, there are a lot of halfway houses in the area. Some are better than others. Oxford House is a national organization. Within Scott County, we have the Thrive Community, Thrive, as I've came across. It's been my experience with most halfway houses that it's not just a place to house people, that there's also during the day, there's work requirements, which require us to do just as you're talking with the treatment, search on life spring, things of that nature, that there are other components that, in my experience with some of the better ones, are required components for people to live there. So I'm, I'm just, I'm sharing now. I don't know this terrible position, so we're all already here together, but, I mean, it's, they're going to be held at the same standard as any other resident that ever will be held there.
See, in everything I've read, they don't do a thing. If a person does not adhere to the rules, they, I guess they just put them back to jail. They don't, they don't take responsibility. They don't, they don't, they don't do anything for, for them except put them in this house. And like I said, they got this thing they call a landlord and he's responsible for whatever they do and that's it. They are no help.
I can assure you, the City of Scottsburg will not give us any special things nor will we give them any ill-special things. So we'll treat them just like any other citizen and, you know, but, other questions? Okay. Okay. Thank you so very much for being with us this evening.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak this evening? If nothing, we will close our public comments section. And next we'll go to a public hearing notice on the CBD, CBBG grant with Melissa Woods.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think most of you know who I am, but for those who don't, I'm Melissa Woods with River Hills Economic Development District. And Mayor Amick had approached us a few months ago about applying for a planning grant for a comprehensive plan. The Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs offers the planning grant at $50,000 is what you would be eligible for with a population under 10,000 people. And the way you were determined to be eligible was through an income survey that our office completed and you were at 68.13% low to moderate income. You had to at least be at 51% to be eligible, so you well surpassed that. I know most of you know what a comprehensive plan is, but the City of Scottsburg has not had its own comprehensive plan, as I understand it, ever. They were under the county's comprehensive plan around 1992 is when that was last done. So there's a good argument for you all to get this completed in that respect, as well as just wanting to have a vision and a plan to follow with some goals and objectives for the city. So the match for this is a 10% required match. So the total project cost is $55,556. That's $50,000 in grant and $5,556 in local match. If the resolution is passed this evening, it will come out of the City of Scottsburg General Fund. So that will be coming up on your agenda. Let's see, I just want to make sure I covered everything. In the past, Oak Ridge wanted us to procure for professional services for the plan prior to the grant application going in, but this is the first round where they will not have us do that until after it's awarded. So that's why not, we have not went out for the services of preparing that plan yet. I have received some letters of support for the grant. The Chamber of Commerce, Visitors Bureau, Bradley Eaton as a citizen, and then I'm supposed to get one from the Scott County Community Foundation. So that'll show some good support for your, for your grant application. Let's see, I'll make sure. Once it's awarded, and the tentative award date is October 15th, not October, August 15th of this year, and then you have about 12 months to complete that plan once it's awarded. So it's not generally competitive, the planning grant process isn't, but it is, you know, by the third or fourth quarter, if they run out of money, they'll get more money the next year. So we're hopeful that we'll get awarded this time around.
What is the gentleman that runs, oh, like, oh, he has apartments here in town. He had where the kid's place was.
Oh, Bosley, Jim Bosley.
Jim Bosley. When I first came in office, he was one of my first calls. He said, Mary, do you need a complex? He's playing.
Yeah. Yeah. And having that too, it just shows justification that you've been through the process, you have some skin in the game and a lot of times for grants to make you eligible, they want to see that what you're going for as far as implementation is in a plan. So it will hopefully, hopefully help you in that respect too, especially with all these funds we see that are coming down from this.
And this is a public hearing right here, so do you have any questions you would like to ask, Ms. Woods? Counsel?
I have no question. I certainly agree with you, comprehensive plan. I'd like to see that done before we revise or determine if it's, I think, you know, we're in the right direction here.
Yeah, I think we're trying to combine all of that. Isn't there's all your ordinances?
I don't make no idea. There needs to be a connection.
Absolutely. For sure, for sure.
Yeah, and if it's awarded, there'll be another public hearing and there'll be some public input in that plan. So that's always good. The community likes to have a part in things like that, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Anybody else? We'll close our public session. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's go now to old business. This will be the second reading of ordinance 2021-16, an ordinance vacationing a portion of the alleyway between Oak Ridge and Park Ridge in Scottsburg. We had this last time on first reading, this is the second reading this week, where we are asking us to vacate that alley.
We were going to check on the UTL.
Right. And again, check on that. And Mr. Albertson assured me that there were no city utilities in that alley.
I didn't think it would be that.
I, I agree. I'd, I'd want to make a motion to pass the ordinance.
Motion is made by Rick Mann, to pack to go forward with ordinance 2021-16. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Bill Hopland.
Bill Hopland, second. Okay. And questions, comments, concerns? During that, all members say aye?
Aye.
Is there a motion to go?
I'll make the motion that the, yeah, third reading by title alone, suspend rules, third reading by title alone.
Chuck Rose makes the motion to suspend rules and have third reading by title alone. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none? All members say aye?
Aye.
So the ordinance 2021-16 passes. Next thing we have is the second reading establishing City of Scottsburg Sewer Sewage Service Area Ordinance Number 2021-14. Is there a motion to go forward on second reading on 2021-14?
I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rick Mann, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? During that, all members say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let's go down to new business. The next we have is Melissa Woods on new business. What about this resolution?
And I gave it to Jane, but basically what that does is it authorizes the mayor to sign off on any documents you need to be included in the grant application and allows him to submit the grant application on the city's behalf. And it also commits the $5,556 from the General Fund as a little match for the project.
We have nothing to discuss, just going to call the Melissa Woods.
It's not a thing.
Oh, it is, okay. There is 2021-R-8. So do we have a motion to go forward with resolution 2021-R-8 going forward with this comprehensive plan, Melissa Woods?
Oh.
Christian Evans makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Chuck Rose, seconds. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all members say aye?
Aye.
Passes on, on there. Next is the Hicks Loan. Counsel, is that going to be you?
I think so.
Okay. Do we have?
Oh, it could be.
Could be. This is where we're loaning money and we have, if you noticed in your packet, and they wrote it to my packet here.
I've got the loan terms here, if that's what you're wanting.
Yeah, listen, why don't you just talk about this and there was, did you get back with your office today and see exactly how?
Not that I've heard. Carrie was out most of the day.
This is money, folks, that we have to loan out to businesses and the federal government gave us to loan out at low interest rates. This is about a 2% loan. I will let council, we will council give the specifics.
So we have the Economic and Industrial Review Board within the city that reviews these applications and makes recommendations to the board, makes recommendations to the council. This loan request was approved by a vote of four to zero at the July 1st meeting. The loan amount approved was up to $177,400, interest rate 2% per annum with a 10-year amortization term. There is a loan outstanding on the property that will be paid from this loan. So it would be the first mortgage possession on the real estate. The listed debt is estimated to be around $62,000. This would be by Mr. Hicks, simply why, with closing costs compared by the Hicks. So what I would, because there was a question, Carrie had sent this in the materials, that the loan amount, the approved amount, the actual loan saw might be low. So we, I would just ask for approval of the Industrial Review Board recommendation not to exceed the 177, 177,400.
Let me just add to that, just a little bit of a note, just to make sure everybody knows where this is at. This is the old Scottsburg last building, which used to be the old Chubb Everett Distribution area, there right on the middle of the street. And if you, as you've seen, Mr. Hicks has put a lot of renovation and wants to continue renovating there. I believe it's going to be his painting business or a paint store there. I think it's a paint store. So.
The exteriors came along, boy.
Yeah. I mean, it's been a huge improvement for, for that facility and for Scottsburg and for Mr. Hicks, so. So, but Scottsburg will have the mortgage on this property, so. With that said, is there a motion to go forward with the Hicks, with this, this loan to Mr. Hicks?
We've just approved it not to exceed the 177.
That'd be what it was, yes.
I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motion to approve the Hicks loan not to exceed $177,000. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Bill Hopland, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns?
177,400 is the number, but that, the Industrial Review Board pretty much.
And $400. But who's got it?
Someone might. Never know.
That kind of money, $400. Okay, so we have a, first by Christian Evans, a second by gentleman Bill Hopland. Any other questions, comments, concerns? We'll correct that to 177,400. All members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Can I jump back to the second reading of the sewer service area? Is there any reason not to do the third reading on that tonight?
I don't think we want to do that.
That's what you, you don't want to do that?
I think, yeah, I'm, I'm with Chuck on this. I think we should take our time.
Going down to the July 30th park closure approval event, that's brought to you by Ms. Jill Baker.
Rhyper here, which is headed by Steven Missy Sadler, are having a fundraiser by hosting a movie on July 30th. And they have two monster trucks that are coming in town for that night for the kids to see and would like to know if they could possibly park one at First and Mordell and Main and Mordell.
Questions? If you don't, does everybody know who Steve Sadler is? Steve Sadler is, and I don't know if I really knew this before taking this position, but it's been an amazing thing. I was educated myself this past summer. And he began, he began out of kindness of his heart to try to set up a way that he might help folks in dire need who are, who are closing in on end of life with throat cancer. And, and so they've been using, we give them no-cost space at the Mid-America Science Park. And I went out there last summer and prayer with them, bless them, don't let them get hurt. And I'll tell you what, it was motorcycle after motorcycle after four-wheeler after whatever kind of car it was. I mean, it was just amazing. We met those folks, there were four individuals. One of them was a little 10-year-old boy. And, and I hate to say it, but we have our resource officer from Highland Elementary there who was a pallbearer and it was quite difficult. And, you know, so this is a, this is a wonderful thing that is going on. So I want to endorse that right there. And it's been a great thing that a Scott family, Scott County family has done to bring this about, so it's very good, so.
Julie said those locations were First and Mordell and Main and Mordell?
Yes.
They just want parked trucks there, but.
Yes.
I, I, I'd make the motion to approve that request.
Chuck Rose makes the motion to approve the, for the event. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rick Mann, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, what announcements? Mr. President, do you have yours this evening?
I have no announcements.
Any fishing terms?
I don't think so.
Let me tell you, folks, a couple of things is happening. This past Saturday, we had to cancel, we had a major event that if you lived on Second Street, Third Street or Main Street, you were notified. If you were listening to WMPI, you were notified because Scottsburg, Indiana was having a concrete pour. If you've ever been to a concrete fest, this is your opportunity to come out and see a concrete fest of 176 trucks pouring. Uh, the hundred seventy-six trucks pouring concrete for a new sewage plant. And, uh, and it didn't happen because of the possibility of rain, and the rain did come. And, uh, so that has been postponed to this Saturday at one AM to twelve PM. I'm kidding you all that, some of that, but it is gonna be a massive pour. So, we've tried to notify folks because at one o'clock at night, we're pulling from three plants. One in Madison, Indiana, one in Salem, Indiana, and Scottsburg, Indiana, all IMI plants. And we have forty-three trucks bringing in a hundred seventy-six loads. Ingress will be on First Street. Egress will be coming back down Second Street. That'll be from Madison and Salem plants. The Scottsburg plant will come in down Moon Glow Road, go north to Marshfield, come down Marshfield to Main, and come in for Main to Montgomery. Then from out over through there. So, it's gonna be a massive pour. You know, so, uh, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna be out there, so if somebody wants to come and walk in. Cause you're in here a lot of backup beep, beep, beeping, and a lot of diesel trucks going. So, if you hear that, that's not a, a foreign flying saucer coming. That's I M I coming. We want to say, let's give Scott Zellers the floor to talk about a new officer we have. Chief, what do you have for us with the new officer?
Uh, Cody Dixon, formerly employed by Austin Police Department. Uh, officially started yesterday's day, but he was in the police department today. He's just basically doing his, uh, human resource stuff to the city. Um, waiting on his uniforms to get in. Uh, he's fully certified and qualified and hit the road soon to get his uniform. He's, he, uh, work, he knows the areas from around here, but, uh, looks like he's gonna do a fine job for us, good job for us.
Can you tell, can you tell counsel who his grandfather was? His grandfather was Rodney Rutter and, and Diane was his grandmother. So, and, uh, so we feel it's gonna be an excellent high for City of Scottsburg. And I want to tell you, and I want to congratulate you, chief, on, uh, on the fair parade we had. You know, I came out and inspected the vehicles. Uh, doors were open, trunks were up, hoods were up. And guys, you could, you could eat off the ridges. I'm telling you, it was that clean. Uh, inspected the weaponry. Each car has an AR fifteen, as well as a shotgun. And, uh, and one car even had tenniers for, uh, for, you know, home type disputes. So, but anyways, the officers were in the blues and everybody just was excellent. And I told them, I said, Scottsburg pride begins right here with you guys. So, thank you guys very much. So, again, chiefly, thank you for your men, your force, and what you do to protect us. So, thank you very much. And we want all protection for you guys as well. Thank you, sir. Thank you, brother. Next we have the Bacala Center had their grand reopening today. So, if you'd like to go up and, and visit with a lot of folks at the Bacala Center. And, uh, they're there every day, lunches served, and it's open again, and they were all so excited to be there. One lady had a big puzzle she had begun a year ago. She had the frame and she came back today and began putting pieces back in again, so.
Boomed the dust off of it.
Yeah, boomed it. Well, she boomed the dust off a few pieces of it. But, uh, but anyways, uh, many of us were bored there in the Napper Hospital. And, uh, you know, today it's the Bacala Center and, and the Bacala family was so gracious to give that to the City of Scottsburg. So, it's a wonderful facility and, uh, you know, it'll be a few things expanding on the stop for, and we'll get you caught up on that. So, that's got my announcements. Anything else? Okay, hearing none? We have a motion adjourned.
My pleasure.
So, adjourned, thank you.